Good evening, everyone. I'm Steve Yanni, Superintendent of Schools. Thank you for coming out tonight to our Transportation Town Hall. I have two administrators with me here tonight. Mr. Chris Robbins, our Director of Transportation, is here to my right. And we also have Mr. Philip Finograv, who's walking behind me right now. He is our Director of Innovation and Technology. These two gentlemen will be doing the bulk of the speaking tonight. I'm going to be taking some notes. We are recording this meeting so that it will be streamed live and also on our YouTube channel. And I'll also be putting out question-and-answer documents so that we capture all the information from tonight, and we'll make sure that that gets out on the website and out on Listserve, either tomorrow, Tuesday, or Wednesday at the latest. All right? So, thank you for coming, and I will turn it over to Mr. Robbins.
Good evening. Here's our agenda for tonight. We're going to go over the root causes for the recent transportation issues, the actions taken to ensure better service, the rationale for school bus changes, and process for investigating safety concerns, school bus capacity information, and parents and guardians an opportunity to voice your questions or concerns. The acknowledgement of issues, lack of early communication of significant stop changes, you know, obviously, that's been an issue, and that's our communication to you, the public. Next one is the students assigned as walkers who could have had stops, and that was in error of the routing software during integration that pulled all those students that originally had bus stops because they were in the walk zone, and that assigned them to, as walkers, because they were in the walk zone regardless of the hazardous route that made them actual bussers. And then another issue that we had was siblings assigned to different stops, and that again came through our issue with the hazardous walk zones. What that did was it would overload buses and, for no rhyme or reason, it would just send kids to the next nearest bus stop once they get capacity. And then, of course, crowding on some routes. With that, there's multiple reasons for the crowding on some routes, and that's because it goes by the bus capacity. So, we have various different capacities. We have 48 passengers, we have 54 passengers, 77, and 84 on a majority of our public school routes. And so, no matter what, it's going to fill the bus to that capacity, the 77, you know, we'll take 77, for instance, regardless of age level. We can't set through the routing software. In fact, none of the routing software that we vetted last year would allow for us to put, say, for middle school or high school, only 56 students per bus. So, again, it fills to capacity, and as we all know, in our way, our secondary students, they can't fit three to a seat, not comfortably. So, as we're going through, we're making those adjustments where we can and where it's needed. And then inappropriate stops. Again, we have several hazardous routes in this district, routes where we don't want students crossing streets, we don't, there's no safe walk for students to get to their bus stop. So, what the routing software did was it erased all of the hazardous routes that we spent weeks putting in. So, instead, now it's allowing kids to cross roads like Tennis Avenue, Norristown Road, Sescou Hannah Avenue. And so, that was something that we, last minute, had to start correcting, and that was a lot of why the information that, you know, we promised that it would come out on a certain date, Monday, that last Monday in August, and unfortunately, we were unable to fulfill that promise because we had to make several corrections. With that, again, it would displace other students because of the lack of hazardous routes. And then, the systems, transportation, and technology not speaking to one another, that was another huge time-consuming thing. The fact that they did not speak to each other caused a lot of manual hours of having to go into Infinite Campus and make those changes because it wasn't directly pulling that information from our routing software.
Wait, before we go there, I do have a couple of questions just for clarity. So, the routing software that we're using auto-populates the bus, so if it's 72 kids or 77 kids, 48 kids, so are you notified somewhere in the system that the bus has filled to capacity, say, for example, at the middle school and high school, so that you, so that your staff knows to go in and put some kids on other buses?
So, it will automatically fill that bus to whatever its capacity is, 77. So, again, we have to manually go in, check, make sure that we're at that 56, and if we're over 56, then we have to go in and make those adjustments. Obviously, at high school, we do allow those buses to overflow because a majority of your seniors are going to drive, some of your juniors are going to drive, and we've never run into an issue where our high school buses are overflowed in doing so. And, you know, all of my counterparts in other districts, they do the same thing.
So, every school year, I'll get a couple emails that inquire why community members see buses that are almost empty leaving the high school. Per Pennsylvania state law, we have to provide a seat for every eligible rider on a bus, whether they opt to take the bus or not. So, when I see buses leave this building at the end of the day, those buses are largely empty, but we are required to reserve a seat for them. Middle school, we see more full buses. Elementary, it's, sometimes they're full and sometimes they're not. If you've seen the car lines at any of our elementary buildings, you know why they're not, the buses aren't completely filled. Can you clarify the number, you said the number 56?
Yeah, so, in our 84-passenger buses, which is our highest capacity, with three to a seat, it's 84 passengers, but with two to a seat, it's 56. So, that's where that number 56 comes in, and, you know, we, unfortunately, it's still a manual process for us, but we go through, and that was a lot of the reason for the change that we had last November as well at the middle school level, was because we had buses that were overflowed, and we went through, and there we were at 55. Obviously, this year, we got a little more, there was a bigger sixth-grade class than an eighth-grade class going out, so that required us to make some changes as well.
So, for clarity, 56 for secondary students, two to a seat?
Correct.
What about elementary?
Elementary, it's whatever the bus capacity is. So, if it's an 84-passenger bus, it'd be 84 passengers, 77, 77.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Robbins, before we, you know, sort of, on another slide, we go into, through the general scope of the challenges of the integration, we did have a slide that sort of talked about why the change, like, why did we buy bus stop warehouses? What was the rationale behind that?
Okay, so, when I first came here 18 months ago, we had routing software that didn't work. It didn't work at all. So, when we routed buses, we pinned the map, essentially. It was a manual process. In fact, when we did the middle school change last year, it took the transportation manager, who's primarily in charge of routing, it took him upwards of 300, 400 hours just to pin a map, go through it, make sure that we had every student, every bus stop, and that as we went through and split them up, that we weren't going to overflow buses. So, that was a big challenge that we had to take on. And being able to have routing software, obviously, prevents us from doing that. It gives us the opportunity, granted, it's not without its own challenges, but it clarifies most of our challenges. The inefficient routes with too many stops and chronic lateness, you know, this allows us to have better timing. You know, there's timing set into our map. Is it perfect? No. And we're seeing those challenges, those inconsistencies, and now that we're getting real data, we're able to make those adjustments as far as the timing of routes. Overcrowding, you know, that, again, we had to look at the rosters that we got from the schools, and we had to manually count students for every single bus, which, you know, is very time-consuming. The software will allow for efficient routes as, you know, we get more familiar with it and we're able to look at times. One of the reasons why we picked this particular software is because it works with the current GPS product that we have, so that we can look at what the route is through the routing software and how long it's actually taking the bus through the GPS data and make those time adjustments. And they'll be in real time, you know, as the integration process becomes complete. Ideally, you know, identifying the overcrowding, that, as I said, with the middle school, that's going to have to be a manual process until the routing software is able to allow us different capacities at different grade levels, that's just something that we're going to have to do manually. And, again, provide real-time updates, that'll come as the integration becomes further along.
Mr. Robbins has talked about the challenges of adapting to the new routing software and some of the reasons why this, that software. Concurrent to that, we also were changing and migrating our student information system to eSchool, which parents knew as the hack to Infinite Campus. And in the past, that manual process of taking all those routes, then they would be uploaded to eSchool and then manually adjusted in eSchool. So, you saw your transportation route there, but you were really waiting for that email that said, "Here's my transportation route." With a system, a modern system like Infinite Campus, ideally, you have an integration that updates in real time. So, if I have to update, we can push out those updates, and they're reflected in the app for you. And as we began that work last February, March, of this migration process, in those timelines, the integration with transportation, we hit progressive challenges. And Mr. Robbins alluded to, at the end, right, when we suddenly needed to make significant changes, we were relying on bulk uploads as opposed to the automated integration, which would have slowed a lot of those pieces.
So, I think, if I can, if I can speak to that for a second. So, we have had onsite from Infinite Campus, some of their professional team trainers working with us to make sure that there is a seamless carryover of information from transportation into Infinite Campus. That should have been happening all along. That is the piece where, when transportation was making changes in their software, it was not being carried through into Infinite Campus. And as parents and guardians, you're looking at Infinite Campus for information, and you're not seeing the information then that Mr. Robbins had. So, it was supposed to be seamless. We've had, as I said, we've had folks from Infinite Campus here onsite working, and, Philip, can you speak to that a little bit about what they're actually doing to make sure that this integration is seamless?
Yeah, so, when we knew that the real-time integration was not going to be ready, we put in place parameters in an interim solution that involved a manual process. But then, because of the scope of the changes that needed to happen in the transportation system, it was more than a manual process could accommodate. So, we worked with Infinite Campus to put ourselves at the top of their development list, and we've been working with the developers on both teams every day to fast-track the automation. Automation still just is going to reflect, here's the information from the transportation system. So, Mr. Robbins and his team are going to be responsive to specific, okay, is this stop appropriate or not? And that will work out. What will happen much more effectively is that will then be accurately reflected in Infinite Campus, and there won't be this delay between what, the narrative you hear from transportation when they resolve your issue to what you're seeing reported in the application.
Yeah, and to speak more to that, you know, as Phil said, we, the fact that we had to manually input all of that data once we realized that the information in Infinite Campus was not reflecting what we had in Traversa, the routing software, you know, it was a full week of, you know, around the clock, inputting all of that student information, you know, because, I mean, we have 4,500 public and non-public students in this district, so it was a lot of work, but, you know, we worked around the clock to get that information in there.
And, so, here, we have the action steps that Dr. Yanni alluded to, right? So, what are we doing now? We've identified and we're accounting for those software limitations. What have we learned about the transportation software, and how do we account for those limitations? For example, bus capacity, right? And knowing that that's a limitation, how, when you use the software, do you then have to make the adjustments? And the fast-tracking of the real-time integration with steps included for quality control. So, right now, we are testing sandboxes of that data, and as that data passes back and forth, we have reports that give us errors, so we're able to address the source of the errors, so that before it goes live, we've identified the source of those errors. Mr. Robbins, if you want to talk a little bit about the process for investigating safety concerns that are communicated to you, and then what we are going to be doing to communicate with families in advance of any change?
So, we've had a few instances so far this year where a parent's come to me and said, you know, "I don't think that my bus stop is, my student's bus stop is safe. I would really like it changed." And I go out and I look at it, I can see, you know, one parent in this room who knows firsthand that, you know, I personally go out, I look at those stops. And this year, I actually did something a little different, was I created a form to send back to the parent that is filing the complaint, so that they know what steps I took to do the investigation and what the resolution for that investigation is going to be. And things like that, I think, are very good for the community, you know, transparency-wise, to see what it is that we're doing, and it's not just me putting a rubber stamp on it or me just denying it without actually taking the steps to investigate it properly. And that is something that any, anybody that has students in the district is able to do. You come to me with a request, and you'll get an investigation.
What are the results of those investigations? The results of your investigations? Where are those? Because I have a complaint, and I never heard back from you. I'd like to know where those results are.
As I investigate them, I send it out to the parent. That makes the complaint.
How long does it take to get the investigation done?
A lot of it depends.
What if it was last school year?
I don't, I'm not sure what investigation, but that's something that, you know, I would like to, you know, speak to you about to make sure that I do the proper investigation for it.
Chris, can you explain the difference between a hazardous route that is deemed hazardous by PennDOT and other routes? What is PennDOT looking at? Because I think, not just here, but I think in general, across the state, there's misconceptions about what PennDOT uses, what factors they look at to deem a route hazardous.
Yeah, I actually wanted to touch on that a little bit later after the presentation, as I discussed our processes. But what deems a hazardous route, a lot of people in the community believe that it's just no sidewalks, but that's not true. That's one tiny piece of PennDOT's investigation, but it's a lot more to do with that. It's traffic flow, it's lighting, it's, you know, shoulder, a safe place for students to walk. It doesn't necessarily have to be a sidewalk. It just has to be a safe place for them to walk. Obviously, the mile-per-hour on that particular road, but they actually come out and they count vehicles over a 15-minute period, how many vehicles go through, and that's how PennDOT determines whether or not it's a hazardous route or not.
So, moving forward, there are two pieces that are really critical. One, when a change needs to be made to a route, we need to be able to communicate that to families 48 hours in advance at least, right? So, on a Thursday, here changed your route, it will take place Monday. That gives families time to adjust routines. It also gives a window of time for a family to say, can we talk about this for a specific situation or circumstance that I'd like to, you know, bring forward for consideration? The other piece that we haven't had before, and is really sort of part of the design of everything we want, is that when these systems are talking, although class schedules are still being developed, and typically, the hack would be this big reveal at the end of August, you know, who's my teacher, what's my class schedule? And part of that is because, because of enrollments, class schedules are constantly being refined and developed. With Infinite Campus, we can have class schedules off, but transportation on. And so, there isn't a reason not to be able to, when routes are developed and established to early in August, communicate the routes are now available, and to have ample time for back and forth between anybody who's concerned and transportation about modifications that need to happen.
Excuse me, do you say, though, that that didn't happen this year?
Correct. This year, we had, as Mr. Robbins alluded, there was challenges with the transportation software, but also there were setbacks with the integration between the two vendors. So, the live integration between the transportation software and Infinite Campus, the delivery mechanism, were not in place.
Because one of my questions is, so, why can this not be worked out during the summer? Why does it have to come down to the day?
And that's exactly, right, that is one of the shortcomings. That is one of the pieces that we have to own. And it's not, you know, it's not about us pointing fingers at the vendors and blaming, you know, A, B, or C. We just have to own it. It was a very, very challenging process, and there were setbacks. We have to own them, and now we're moving forward to reconcile them.
To make sure that everyone hears the questions that everyone else is asking, if we could have folks step up to the microphone, because this is being recorded, so sometimes voices in the audience gets lost.
So, just to clarify, what you're saying is, this year was the exception, and next year, we will not have any of these issues? Because the systems will be talking, there will be no glitches? So, next year, we have very seamless because of early August, the schedules will go out?
Yes, yes, because I won't tolerate what happened this year again. You know, we owe it to our community, and I'm not grandstanding, both of these gentlemen know what I'm about to say, we owe it to our community that you should have faith that you can put your kid on a bus, and the kid gets to Liberty School in a safe way and a timely way. And the same thing at the end of the day. School ends, kid comes on the bus, and comes back to the bus stop in a timely way and a safe way. And the amount of confusion and angst and anger that emerged this year can never happen again.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a question. Twice now, my children have been put on a stop, and I had to get them moved because it was unsafe. Unsafe in my eyes, my family's eyes, and even the bus driver's eyes. Why do I have to ask multiple times? Like, I had to do it when my son moved to sixth grade, I had to do it again when he moved to ninth grade. And my little guy went from elementary school to middle school. They keep putting them on a spot in an intersection that A is not safe, and it got changed. But why do I have to keep asking? If a spot has been deemed unsafe for children to stand, why is the software still putting them there? Why do I have to keep asking?
The short answer for that is, the way that the routes were created was, we took the existing stops from previous years, from previous runs.
So, but the child, my child, the stop got changed when he was in sixth grade. When he went to ninth grade, he got moved back to the original unsafe spot. So, he had a spot in eighth grade that was perfectly safe, and they put him into a spot that's not for ninth grade. And they did the same thing to my fifth grader who was moving to sixth grade.
Well, with those stops, you know, there are some stops that we have for elementary school students, there's stops that we have for middle school students, and stops for high school students. And a lot of it has to do with the age of the student and the maturity and...
That's fine, but it's not age or maturity, it's the fact that it's poorly lit, it's a bad intersection, it's a very busy intersection, and it floods out. So, there's no place safely for children to stand, especially when it floods or if there's snow. And snow, and I understand we get all kinds of snows, but I also understand the snow sticks around everywhere. So, there's no safe place for children to stand. So, my question is, is this going to have to be a repeated question with you?
It shouldn't have to be, no. Not now that we have routing software where we can mark intersections as, you know, no stop.
Okay. And then, my second question is, last year, my son was stuck on a bus for over an hour in the snow. The bus broke down, and we didn't move back for a while, right outside of that door. He and two other students from Sandy Run were stuck on that bus. I was at work, and then my, and that impacted my younger child getting in my house, because the older child had to get him in. So, and I was in Center City at work. So, not only was it impacted by the fact that my kid couldn't get in the house, bad weather, and it was just a really bad situation. If the bus gets stopped like that for an hour because the bus breaks down and the kid can't get up that hill where that door is, could somebody tell us about it a little quicker?
Absolutely, and you will be able to do so through Infinite Campus now. There is a messenger system that we're able to utilize. Back last November, admittedly, I didn't even know how to use our messenger system that we have, or that we used to use at the district. I didn't learn about that. That actually came from the debacle that was that, that snowstorm in early November. So, you know, we do have that option, and I'm going to speak to, you know, a little bit later about another option that we're going to have in the future.
And I understand it was only three students, but it impacted those three families?
Yeah.
Okay, I understand.
So, guys, my name is Robert Cruz. I, Dr. Yanni, first of all, thank you for putting this together. One of the things I'd like to say as a parent is that, you know, integrating new software and other software, I'm sure there's techie stuff in there. I mean, half of what you were talking about, I'm sorry, sorry, I can't remember your first name, but half of the stuff you were talking about, I'll be honest, it's like, you know, gone. I understand that, you know, that's not, most of our background's here. However, the safety of kids, that's like our primary concern, my primary concern. I invite you to, on a rainy day, in the fall, or when there's snow on the ground, walk down those bus routes that you are defining as safe, and you tell me that you feel good about sending your 70, 9-year-old daughter down that street. and you tell me that you feel good about sending your seventy, nine-year-old daughter down that street. Okay? First off, let me finish. Second, if you're leaning on PICO, I'm sorry, not on PICO, on PENDA to give you your safety measurement, why do you bother doing an investigation on your own when if it conflicts with what you want to deem as safe, you will just sort of lean into what PENDA's giving you? That's my concern. Third, is that I have asked in multiple emails for responses, I got zero. It's disrespectful, it's rude. As a third generation in this district, I've been here, my family's been here for over forty-five years, longer than you guys have, okay? It's disrespectful to the community to overlook the concerns of childhood safety. I don't think you understand what it means to sit at your office and wonder, oh my God, if she didn't call, is she home yet? That's a horrible feeling, okay? When it starts snowing, when the leaves start coming down, and I'm talking about the intersection of Kane and Butler. And if you don't know the email that I'm referring, saying, I'll send it right back out to you, okay? But I don't think that ignoring the email was the right thing to do. I mean, you know, and I'm sure you're getting inundated with it, but a simple, I got your email, I'll get back to you, would have been nice. It was disrespectful. And I'm offended, and I think a lot of the families here are too.
Let me first apologize about that, because that's not my goal as an administrator in the district, is to not respond to emails. Just to put it into perspective, right now, I currently have over twelve hundred emails in my inbox. And just the three days over Labor Day weekend, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, I had over twenty-eight thousand go in and out of my inbox.
But I think the main point is, student safety is the main...
Yeah, I understand what you're saying, I get it, I'm busy too, okay? I'll be honest, we're all busy. We've taken time out of our families. I should be home doing math right now. And you're all laughing, you know it's true. But I should be home doing math right now. Because that's gonna take up two hours of my life, I'm not gonna get back. Fine, I'll do it. But I took the time away from that to come here, to voice an opinion that, in my view, protects that of my daughter. I have one child, okay? I wanna make sure that she gets there safely. My main concern, and this might be true of a lot of us, is how you're defining your safety, what you define as a safe route, not a safe route. If you sat in your car and looked at the street from here to there in the middle of a beautiful day, you're checking it now. It's like the most beautiful time of the year. Right? Should we not be looking when it's raining and snowing, and that's when we're all worried? Am I wrong? I mean, that's my concern, you know? So, again, safety. So, what is, so, and just to finish out what I'm saying is, you know, another parent said, why do I have to keep asking? Well, that's my question. And am I supposed to expect that when you put your stamp of, no, the change isn't happening, that I'm supposed to stop there? Because we're not.
Yeah, and for that particular intersection, there's not...
There's not what?
It's not a no, Kane and Butler. It's, you know, Kane and Willis.
No, Kane and Chestnut or Beechnut is where the problem, where... The email that was sent out to you asked that you change a stop from Kane and Chestnut or Beechnut, and move it up to Kane and Butler, for the simple fact that it is poorly lit. I looked at the criteria, I know what the criteria are. Lighting, lighting is poor. There is no sidewalk, there's no width. Okay, so the three criteria that you're using to judge and shoot it down and tell me no, those are the criteria that is used by PENDA, and you are calling it safe incorrectly. And I told you that in the email that I think they responded to. Now, past that, your previous response has been, well, I looked into it, and there's two or three other children on the bus on that route. Okay, well, I stopped there, and it's funny, my kid's the only one on that route. The bus drives by my house, which is at an intersection, drives by, goes down a couple of blocks, stops, dumps her off there, and then she has to walk up right back to where she started. So, I mean, I don't understand the logic of the hard no's. That's what I'm having an issue with.
But it wasn't a hard no.
But it was. Like, I sent you back your email, it's in your email.
Well, it's since been changed.
Email?
No, what I'm saying is, it should have been changed. And I went through and I emailed the parents from that stop, for what was in Infinite Campus.
Would you, okay, we're not gonna, we're not gonna get...
No.
Would you please, Chris? Yeah, would you please email me? And then, Chris, can you please email me what you emailed out to the parents so that we can bring it to us?
Sorry for stopping so much time, guys, thanks.
Hello. Hello, Harvey Pfeffer. I live in Tannery Wood on Sesquahana Road, and near Sparks Field. And I got a message, an email, a couple, I guess a month or more ago, that my stop at Tannery Wood was eliminated. And in Infinite Campus, it shows that my two kids who go to high school, it's very close, but they're walkers now. But there is no place to walk on Sesquahana Road. And it's a small section of there, there's no sidewalk, it's a very fast road. But now, I talked to one of my kids, and they say, oh, the bus comes now. And I wasn't notified of that, and still shows my kids as walkers. So, I'm very confused about what's going on.
Yeah, that was one of those hazardous routes that got eliminated in the system. Sesquahana, no student should ever have to cross Sesquahana. We had students from Tennis Narrowhead that were crossing over to Sesquahana and Gentry, and, you know, obviously, students from Tannery Woods. And if they should be corrected in our system, so if you can shoot me an email, I can check it and make sure that what's in our system is reflective in Infinite Campus.
Okay, so, once it's corrected, it'll show the correct time that the bus is supposed to...
The time, the bus number, and the stop, yeah. But it will be right out in front of that complex.
And similarly, I remember maybe six months ago, the commissioner of my ward said that there's gonna be a sidewalk installed, and they cut down lots of trees. I was expecting, oh, lovely sidewalk, taking me to the crosswalk, that let my kid know. It didn't happen. So, I don't know if you know about that, but I'll talk to you.
Yeah, that I don't know.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Hey, Sean Egan, my son goes to Fort Washington. I was a little late, so I apologize if this was hit in the front. And I don't know if it's related to the system issues or not, but he's on a bus that's been consistently five minutes late or more, and the students are getting to school during or at the tail end of morning announcements. Bus twenty-one, it's been an issue. You know, the first week, we were like, well, you know, they're working on some of the kinks, but it seemed like it was still an issue last week. Frankly, the last few mornings, we've kind of given up on the bus and just taken him to school directly for the clogging of the traffic on Island at that time. So, I don't know if you're aware of that to any degree.
Not for that particular bus. So, you know, I do know that we have issues with other buses that are chronically late, and we're doing what we can to make those adjustments to get them to school on time. But I will look into this one first.
Okay, and we're on the tail end of the route, so, I mean, if it's a little late, we would notice it more than others, but we have been noticing they're getting there during morning announcements or towards the tail end, and the kids are kind of scrambling in their classrooms to get ready for that, so...
Yeah, the way that we have our route scheduled in our system is those buses should be arriving at seven thirty-five to... And, you know, obviously, I'm sorry, eight thirty-five.
Yeah, well, I knew an hour ago, but...
Yeah. And so, obviously, you know, we were aware of one situation where that was happening, but now we're aware of another, and we'll take a look at it, do what we have to do to correct it.
All right, thanks.
Hi, guys, I'm Melissa Corcoran. My daughter goes to Fort Washington, she's a walker, but my son is door-to-door transportation from Fort Washington Elementary. First, I wanna say, just to start off, I don't envy you. I know I don't envy you at all, but the common thing that I'm seeing in this is communicate, communicate. And now we're four weeks since all of the transportation was supposed to be done, and we got an email, this is a meeting. Something should have went out to be, to, you know, calm people down before, meet us here for a meeting. I mean, these are the issues, these are the bullet points. We know we're working on them, because if that went out, I didn't get it. I've also called a couple of times and have not heard anything else. Bus thirty-eight from Fort Washington, door-to-door, has not been to school on time. And it's a thirteen-mile route for eight kids. Last year, it was a twenty-minute bus ride, and now it's an hour. And I was saying to some of the other parents, you know, as adults, it sucks to get your day started late, and it throws you off. When you have autism and you get to school twenty-five minutes late, twenty minutes late, his day's pretty much shot. And it's hard enough to move to a new building and a new schedule and a rotating schedule, but then to show up late and not be able to go to your classes on time or your locker? And I just feel frustrated, because we're not, nothing's changing. And I don't, it's not the driver. He's there on time. It's the route, and something needs to be adjusted.
And so, last year, how long was the...
It was, he was there, it was twenty minutes. And now, today, it was fifty-seven minutes from Fort Washington Elementary.
Can we check on why some of, like, some of the routes are longer?
I can tell you, with all our special ed routes, we have three special ed routes. Last year, we only had two special ed students go up from Sandy Run Middle School to the high school, but we got about eight students coming out of the elementary school and then new students coming into Sandy Run. So, those runs are a little heavier.
And I understand that. He has GPS on his cell phone, and I see it. And if you're telling me there's three routes, there is no reason for him to be all in... I mean, he's all over the place. Thirteen miles for eight kids just seems a little crazy if there's three buses.
Well, and they all are, all three of them are that way. The middle schools are their older routes. The only thing that we would be able to do is get a new, another bus and get, you know, hire another driver, hire another agent.
Exactly. Right, we're from seven fifty-three to eight oh seven. Those are the times. The one day he got there on time, it's because I had to wake my daughter up that goes to elementary school, put her in the car, and drive him to the middle school to make it there on time. So, I just wanted to bring that to your attention, because I called a couple of times, and I never heard anything. And kids shouldn't have to start their day that way when they're out there waiting and getting on the bus and...
Absolutely.
Hi, my name's Rachel Berger. My son goes to Maple Glen Elementary School. We live in Arrowhead, and so, like the previous parent said, aside from hearing about this meeting, there has been no communication. So, if you check Infinite Campus once before the school year starts, unless word goes through the grapevine, you don't know to check it again, that there have been changes. So, that's what happened to us on the first day of school. The bus just didn't show up. So, it was supposed to be there around eight o'clock. Eight thirty, I finally call, and the lovely woman who answered the phone couldn't even locate the bus driver. I hear her on the phone, calling on the intercom to her, the radio. She couldn't locate her. So, finally, she says, you know, can you drive them? I'm like, well, yeah, but what about the other dozen students at the bus stop? Can't drive them. So, she got in a bus and drove in or rerouted a bus. I don't know who ended up picking them up, but somebody came. But nobody else notified the school, so, except me. I called Mrs. Schultz, and I said, hey, there's gonna be about a dozen kids from Arrowhead and whoever else is on this bus that are coming late. I also found out that there was a boy that got picked up on that bus that went to Fort Washington Elementary. So, it went to Maple Glen, and then to Fort Washington Elementary. And the bus driver said to the mom, I'm friendly with her, said, don't worry, I know your kids going to different school, I'll get them there. So, kudos to the bus driver for doing that, but that should have never been a situation, that little boy who had to go to Maple Glen before going to Fort Washington Elementary, first day of kindergarten. Not okay. I had to spread the word to my neighbors about the change in the bus time and to check Infinite Campus. Furthermore, there was a lot of confusion in the Arrowhead development, because there seemed to be multiple stops within eyesight of each other. So, people were like, oh, where do I go? And I said, you know what, don't worry, the bus will see you, and it will stop, especially in the first week. So, we were good there. I also wanted to follow up. We haven't had as many problems with lateness since we started working out these kinks this year, but last year, the bus was always late. And it got to the point where my son wanted me to drop him off. So, a couple of days a week, even now, I drop him off at school, so that is adding to the congestion that we're trying to avoid in the school parking lots. We also had an issue last year with the bus driver coming home. My son, who is a third grader now, second grader last year, informed me that the bus pulled over at the church at Butler and Sesquahana, so the bus driver could use the restroom. And I know I spoke with the district about that before, and I was surprised to hear that. I get it, people have emergencies, right? But what's the policy? There has to be a policy. And I'm hoping that at this point, since it was brought to your attention in the spring, that there is a policy in place so that the children will not be left unattended on the bus for any reason at any time.
So, to address that part, you know, that was something that I thought didn't need to be discussed, that should have been, you know, it's in the driver handbook, you're never to leave students alone on a bus. And since then, we have reminded the drivers, you know, you can't leave students unattended on the bus if you have an emergency situation like that. Call us on the radio if you're embarrassed, call us over the phone. And we will send somebody out to either finish your route or sit with the students until you're done doing whatever it is that you need to do.
How many strikes that bus driver did return to duty?
I'm sorry, what do you mean?
Is it a three-strikes, you're out? How many times do they leave children on the bus unattended before they are removed of their responsibility for caring for my safe transportation of my children?
Per the current bargaining agreement, we have to use progressive discipline.
Are there any... I recommend institution with a bargaining unit, and there's progressive discipline, but there's also one-strike-you're-out situations?
That's not defined in the contract.
Hi, I'm Sonid Shah. My son Milo goes to Maple Glen Elementary School. I think my concern is probably smaller than everybody else's, but this, he's a first grader. This was the first year he had a bus, he was a walker. We live at, around Terrace and Welsh Road. And luckily, he got a bus this year, we're very thankful for that. But it was down Welsh Road. So, I called in and spoke to someone in the Transportation Department. And they, I asked, could it be, it seems like the bus would go right past the intersection at our neighborhood at Welsh and Terrace. Would it be okay if he did that? They said, yeah, that's fine, we'll get it updated. I didn't see it updated in the system, so I called back, and they said, just have him go out there, and the bus driver will pick up, you know, whoever they see. I thought that was a little weird, but that's fine. The bus driver was very kind, he's great, bus twenty-six. And he, you know, he picked up my son. I, he asked, you know, who told you to come to this stop? And I told him who I spoke with in your department. He's like, that's fine, you know, I'll get him there. I called back, because it didn't get updated in the Infinite Campus system, and they said it'd be updated by next week. I saw the update come through, it didn't update his stop, it just updated his time to earlier, but the bus still comes at the same time, which is, you know, six or seven minutes later, which is fine. My only concern is, the bus driver's great, and my son has had no problems so far. But my concern is, because it's not updated in the system, if the bus driver's out one day, and there's a different bus driver, or something like that, will the bus know to pick my son up at the stop? And more importantly, to drop him back off at that spot? I was, I called in about it, and she said to email the transportation@upperdublinsschooldistrict.com, but I haven't received a response yet, and it hasn't been updated. So, I was just wondering what the status on that would be.
Well, any route that's in our system should, that's what the driver's gonna get. They're not gonna get what's in Infinite Campus. Eventually, as integration, you know, goes live, that information will automatically be in Infinite Campus. But they're gonna get what we give to the driver. So, if it's on the driver's route, that'll be fine. If you could, send me personally an email, and I can check it out and make sure that it gets updated.
Okay. What's your...
Sorry, that's the first part of this. If you want to just come up, I'll just give you a card.
Yeah, that's fine. Oh, no problem, thanks.
Good evening, I'm Annie Markucci, Inductionary. Thank you for returning my email. I'm the one that was concerned about... I'm the one that was concerned about children dying down the street. We are, Stewart Lane is in between Ambler Road and Bethlehem Pike. And the speed that the cars go at Ambler Road is terrifying. There's a lot of traffic in the morning. There's no sidewalks. And the children have to cross the road in order to get onto the bus. And what concerned me this year was our neighbor's five-year-old gets on the bus and the first day, got off the bus, crossed the road, and was going the wrong way up the street. And this is when, my daughter's eleven, so she knows which way is home. But I think that you're all talking about your software and your software talking to each other. And I don't know if you're watching that. And I think when, when you get a complaint like the one that I gave you, I think that it has to be looked at. And if you are getting more than ten, fifteen complaints like mine, then you need to scrap this system and start from scratch. And I don't have any sympathy because I'm a travel planner and I do shuttle for two to three to four thousand people. I know what shuttle and bus thing is like. And what I will say to you is that when we have a problem, we've got to have a person on the other end of the telephone that we can speak to that makes us feel like we're being listened to. And when you call your office and the person says, thank you for not chatting at me. I'm sorry, I know there's lots of people about this problem. I don't know what the answer is. And I'm a mother and I've got children in the district. I've got the same problem. Nobody wants to hear that. They want to get a person on the other end of the phone that takes down the very, all of the details and says, I will get back to you or I'll make sure that somebody gets back to you with a plan. And until you start doing that, I don't care how many emails you go, until you start doing that, nobody's going to take this transportation system seriously. The other thing that bothers me and my husband, and you're lucky you've got me up here and not my husband, is the drivers. I don't know whether you listen to the drivers. I don't know whether you get input from the drivers. I don't know whether the drivers give you input about the bad kids on the buses. But you need to be listening to those drivers. And if those drivers are driving with headphones on and letting the kids do whatever they want on the bus, then you need to be aware of that as well. And when parents come to you and they tell you that that's what's going on, you need to be listening. Because when something goes wrong, this whole community starts crying about how we didn't do something. And I'm telling you that my bus stop, somebody is going to get hurt. That bus has always come down Stewart Lane and gone back up Ellis Lane. But I understand that we're not talking about individual stops yet. I am telling you now that somebody is going to get hurt. And if you've got serious complaints like mine coming in, they need to be looked at.
Very articulate. Feel a little pressured now. So my daughter is on bus twenty-seven from, and by on, I mean, by sheer will and luck someday, she's on bus twenty-seven from Sandy Run. The bus, I can talk about the morning and then I'll talk about the afternoon. In the morning, it has not been on time ever. We, it was over a half hour late for the first couple of weeks of school. We did then receive messaging that our time had switched and historically, the time was made earlier. But bizarrely, it seems, the bus seems to have now not be a half hour late, but it is still fifteen to twenty minutes late every day. They are getting their school on time, so that's the good news. The bad news is, just like the mother of the son with different needs said, you know, children starting their day and especially pre-teen teenagers are completely flummoxed when their day starts off. They have to wake up so early. We know how difficult that is for our children. And they have to stand at a bus stop. They start getting frustrated. And it's not the best way to start their academic day. They have to hit the ground running when they get into the classroom and they're not able to do so because sometimes they're literally running to get to the classroom and their mindset isn't there. And so we need for our children to be successful. And one of the ways to do so is to make sure that the bus gets there on time. Now, if it's going to be habitually late, if fifteen minutes later is the actual time, then just tell us that. Because we can tell our children what their actual time is at the stop, their pickup time, right? So if I say to my daughter, okay, it's not seven oh six, it's seven sixteen, she'll be able to gauge and plan for her day differently. And I think that that's really important. Again, it's about her success in the classroom when she gets to the school. And we need to help set her and the other children up for success. In the afternoon, it's been an absolute nightmare. Every day, I got texts saying, we just passed our stop once. We just passed our stop again. Oh, they're gonna let us off the bus now. And so the bus was doing a circuitous route and it was passing our stop time and time again. It is late, but, you know, in the afternoon, I'm not gonna complain so much because I more care about, I mean, she's getting home, I more care about the morning. But it's also significantly overcrowded. You can imagine there are children of varying sizes because they're in that growth spurt age. And so there was, there is significant overcrowding on that bus. Today, she was thrilled. She said, they split my bus in two. And I guess half of them went on one bus, half went on another. She was thrilled. It was one child perceived. She got home very quickly. But I don't actually know if that's what's going to happen every day. Because as many other parents said, I didn't get a communication. I don't even know if it was the same bus number that was for half bus. And so as you work these things out, I would ask for you, because we should not hear these things from our children, the district should be our communication vehicle. Pun completely intended. That you should say to us, okay, bus twenty-seven is now being split into two. It's now bus twenty-six and twenty-seven, whatever the numbers are. And here is when you should expect it to be home. But we didn't receive it and I don't know what tomorrow will bring for her. And she is discombobulated, got, discombobulated by that.
Let me ask these two gentlemen a question up here. So now that we have integration, isn't it, we can send out a message to a bus or to the parents and guardians of kids on that bus, correct?
So we have the ability to, Mr. Robbins has the ability to go and say, bus twenty-seven, and send out a message about changes to all the guardians of kids on bus twenty-seven. The real-time integration is that piece that we've been working with the developers. And right now, that integration goes to a sandbox so that we can identify errors. Because what we don't want to do is say, here, and have errors come through. Right, so right now, when Mr. Robbins makes a change...
Let me, let me, I don't mean to be rude, but if this bus is split tomorrow or it's going to be late, we have the ability to send a communication, correct?
Thank you. Because she did communicate to the kids, right? She knew what, like, she was told to go on a bus, right, by somebody?
So the communication that I sent out at the end of last week when we made this change went to those families that their children were being split onto a different bus. Because your, your bus number and stop time wasn't going to change. So...
Right, so I think that, just as honest feedback, my child was still affected by the changes that you made, even though she remained on bus twenty-seven. So all of a sudden, on Monday, half of her bus isn't there. It's a change to her, even though, again. And so you should think about your communication in a broader way than you are currently. And I think that if you do so, some of the problems that people have been expressing can be mitigated.
Uh, this is Mike. I also live in Arrowhead. So yeah, the first week was a mess. But so far, you know, Infinite Campus has been right within five minutes. My daughter enjoys the bus stop, although she's now the only one there. Whether it was twelve, there the first few days, which is, I guess, interesting, but works for us, I'm not concerned. But what I'm curious about is, what is the protocol, be it written or just kind of understood between bus driver and student and or parent? So when I get picked up, or I get picked up at about, they said eight oh two. So I have, when she comes in the morning, there's about five kids on the bus. All might be from America. And in the end of the day, there's again, five or eight. So I don't know where it goes backwards and how many kids are ever on it. It fills, it doesn't, it's me. But at that moment, all I know, there are not that many kids on the bus. So is the bus driver supposed to? Now, you had, I think in the thirteenth school, had four different bus drivers, which is, I don't know if that's just data thing or who's gonna be the permanent one. I heard there was a medical issue with a more current bus driver. But are they, say, are they looking in the mirror going, hey, Steve or Sally or Joe, we're here? Or they have no idea who's gonna be off, when and where? I have friends in other districts in which the bus driver opens the door and says, are you here to pick up that Dave? Yes, we are. Okay, well, not let them off without an identification back of the person picking up, not your eighth grader, but your kindergartner is in fact standing there. So what should that, that relationship between bus driver and student, bus driver and person standing on corner? How should that work with written and kind of in the unwritten way?
So you're in an unfortunate circumstance where the regular driver for that route is out on medical right now. So that's why you're seeing a substitute, you know, in and out of that bus. The, each driver gets a route sheet. And with each stop, and this is something that we weren't able to provide with before, but now with each stop, it will tell you, you know, say, I'll just use Seneca, you know, as your stop. I don't know if that's your exact stop, but when, it shows that stop number, it shows the stop, the time, but then it also has a list of the students and their grades, like their grade levels.
So did you screen it while the bus driver stays or...
No, 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 it's a, it's a piece of paper. And by day two, maybe, the drivers are familiar. They know, okay, this is the stop where I have the kindergarteners. And, you know, they know who that kindergartner is and that a parent should be there to greet them. But unfortunately, as I said, you're in an unfortunate situation where your driver is going to be changing until the regular driver comes back.
So the end goes, yes, the bus driver should know there are four kindergarteners at this spot, what their names are. And to me, if only three of you walked out, hold on, and you look, okay, there's one still back there. Then, again, my daughter's five, I will source, I don't know. But she, she said to us for the first few days, and she couldn't care less how late the bus was, it was playing, you know. But she said, the bus driver said something that to her was, oh, this is the only stop in America. So the first stop came. And for the next forty seconds, she bawled uncontrollably because she thought she couldn't get off the bus. Has she, I don't know what was actually said. And I don't know if the bus driver said something, but like, it was just, you know, these are five-year-olds. They need to be, oh yeah, your bus, we have a few more stops. Mom and dad will be, you know, whatever. But, because she freaked out. My bus driver said, we've got no more stops, I can't get off. But hopefully, the longer they're, she's there, the more the bus driver, whether it's temporary or permanent, knows who's around. That would make you just feel a lot better.
Yeah, and that's the thing. We try and keep the same substitutes as much as we can on those routes when a driver's gonna be out for a long period of time. You know, we're, unfortunately, we find ourselves in a situation where a substitute's not available all the time. So we have to make changes. But for the most part, if you have a driver that's gonna be out for a long period of time, it's gonna be the same substitute. So, and they get to know the kids and, you know, we have a good group of drivers that are very, you know, in tune with the kids and where they should be getting off.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name's Stacy Brazil. Mr. Robbins, I just want to thank you for the emails back. I happen to live in the Beechnut-Kane area. And I just have a couple of questions. My first question is, does the township share with you where the sidewalks are? Because I know you deal with Penda and what constitutes safe or not. But if you personally or don't personally come on my street to check out Kane, whether it's Willett, Beechnut, Temple, it's a very curvy road and nobody has sidewalks. So I was just curious if you, if you happen to know in the district who has sidewalks and who doesn't have sidewalks? Even if some might be safe or might not be safe? Because even if there's no sidewalks on Kane per se, they're walking on people's lawns. So my daughter got yelled at for being on somebody's lawn. So, but it's the only safe place to be because she can't be in the middle of the road on Kane. So I was just curious to know that. And I also wanted to say thank you for changing the bus stop because we've always had, because of our roads. And we have several elementary, middle, high school kids. They've all kind of gone through. Our stop's always been Beechnut and Kane and it wasn't this year. And I know that you changed the high school first, which is great. And then you tried to change my middle schooler's stop by sending a small van, which I thanked you for. But my daughter unfortunately didn't want to go on a van with a couple of kids. She wanted to go on a bus with her friends. Which, I don't want to sound entitled or anything like that, but obviously, that little van can be used for somebody else that might need it. But I didn't understand why they couldn't, you couldn't just send a bus, a regular bus, when they've always had a bus, the middle school. So I just didn't understand why you had to make an exception and find a smaller transportation vehicle for that. I just didn't have any understanding of that. And also, my daughter's high school bus was changed when she was leaving high school and her normal bus driver told her not to get on that bus again, told her to get in a different bus from now on. And that's not reflected in Infinite Campus. So I'm just kind of wanting to know how it all kind of happens. And if the bus drivers are talking to you and communicating with you on what stops work and what isn't working with the new system is talking to each other, since all the steps have been, not everything's been changed, but so many things have been changed to make things more efficient. And maybe things aren't as efficient as we want them to be because the systems aren't talking to each other. So are the bus drivers speaking to you and you're listening to what they have to say if they're, it's, the routes aren't correct?
So I'll touch each one of your topics first. The first one, as far as the, why there's not a bus that goes to Kane and with Willett or Kane and Beechnut for the middle school. And that's just because of timing. For the bus to go in there, for us to reroute a bus to go in there, there are gonna be the schooling. That van is already picking up students for Sandy Run Middle School. Students that are displaced out of the district that, you know, were still required to transport here. And also students on Morris Road and Cary. So those are the students. So it's, it's not like we're sending a van just for those students in that particular neighborhood. We're just sending it past there on its way to Sandy Run. Then as far as the sidewalks, our routing software has a live map on it. So we can see where there's sidewalks and where there's not sidewalks when we look at each individual student in the software. So, you know, we have that capability. And, but I personally like to go out there and look at the roads. You know, I've been down, you know, Kane several times covering routes last year. So I'm very familiar, you know, with the area, so. You know, I've been down, you know, Kane several times, uh, covering routes last year, so I'm very familiar, you know, with the area, so, um, and then, I'm sorry, what was the, the last one that you?
Um, about my high schooler going on a different bus because their bus driver told them to.
That, that I don't know. Um, I sent out a communication when we had split the high school bus, I sent out the communication, you know, this is what bus it's going to be, but I'm not aware or even understand why they would be going on a different bus, other than the one that I put in, myself personally put into Infinite Campus. So I will take a look at, at that, and if you could just send me an email of that exact communication between the driver and your daughter, I can address it by the driver.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Debbie Dillon and I'm here for my daughter. My grandkids live on Meadowbrook Avenue. Um, the first day of school was going crazy, especially since little children were put on to be picked up off and picked up at, um, Forest Creek Road off Cedar Road. And I don't know what PENDOT's said is about it, but there is no shoulder on the road, there is no sidewalk, the lighting's terrible. I know I sent you an email, I haven't heard anything back about it. And you have a second grader, a kindergartner and a fifth grader at that stop. For the fifth grader right now, she's being driven to school because unfortunately she broke her ankle. But, you know, the parent of the kindergartner took her child to a different stop, and in the meantime, we've done the same thing with my grandson. So I don't know if you totally eliminate Forest Creek and Cedar Road as a stop or not.
Should be.
Cause that was their original bus stop.
Yeah, it should be, there should be a stop there, so often.
Yeah, there, no kids are, and I do have to say, I appreciated the fact that that first day of school, there were actually two teachers on the bus with lists in their hands telling the kids where to get on and off. Okay, it sounded like a deer clucking headlights that day, when, you know, I'm standing there and calling his name in the bus, it's time to get off, this is your bus stop. And all the way home, grumble, 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 because that was unfamiliar to him. The other issue is today, the bus driver told the parents as they were picking up kids that tomorrow the bus would be earlier. Not a communication from you. At six fifty-three Meadowbrook Avenue, this is where the kids are being picked up, and it would be about eight ten tomorrow.
I, I don't know why that communication took place, but I will speak to the driver because that, that communication should not come from the driver. That should come from my office.
We were told that that tomorrow would be earlier. And, and we love Mr. Lee, he's a great driver, so. Thank you.
Do you mind if I tell you this, like, I'm just really loud, if there's room to talk, then no. Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess I have the audience. So, uh, my name is Reza Zargani, I'm an alumni here at Upper Dublin, uh, class of twenty seventeen, currently a student at Temple. Um, so I have a little brother who's in eighth grade at Sandy Run. The only question I had was, um, what were some of the factors that, um, took place, well, I guess implemented your software or anything like that or algorithm? I heard a whole bunch of rumors last year when the schedule got changed, but, um, when I was a student, I was able to go onto the district website, maybe in less than two minutes and look up the schedule and look up when my bus is coming, where the location, it always, never really was an issue. Now, I guess with all the technological advances we have, it seems like it's gotten more complicated than simplified. Um, again, what were some of the factors that made you guys change from, you know, something that worked to something that, quite frankly, doesn't seem like, isn't working? Well, cause it, it didn't seem like you had a lot of answers for everyone else. I hate to beat down when you have to like, I, there were a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of people are wondering about it on campus. If something so simple worked back then, what were the changes?
So, the one thing that we didn't have before was routing software. Things to help us with, you know, account for students, account for bus stops. And, you know, it's new to us, we're, we're working through it, we're trying to make sure that it's, it's a seamless process. But some of the things that, when we were vetting routing software was, one, if it had the capability to work with our GPS, um, so that we could get that real-time integration as far as stop times and get that information out to, to parents. Instead of guessing or using Google Maps, who, quite frankly, doesn't understand traffic patterns or, or anything like that. Um, the other thing, um, that, very. The other thing that was very important to me with the routing software was being able to have a routing software that comes with its own parent app. So, um, you know, being able to have that information, the parents being able to have that, you know, bus stop information at their fingertips at all times, to me, was very important. And although we're not there yet, we're still working out the kinks in the routing software itself, that's something that I think would be very beneficial to the community, to have that sense of communication.
Do you mind if I ask the follow-up question, but that's all right? I don't know, the, um, so is this basically something to compare with Septa's app? I don't know if anyone, everyone's familiar, but you can look like at all time, um, where the buses are, where the trains are and everything. Is this somewhat of an attempt to do something like that at some point? And this is just the kinks, or this is something that you guys want to keep as an app, you know, the schedule's there and that's the setup?
No, so there, there would be more to it. Um, we would be able to set it so that it could, if the parent signs up, you know, for the app, because it's something that's voluntary, the parents don't have to have the app, but the app would be avail- available to them. It will notify them based off the, the vehicle's GPS, the bus is five minutes from the bus stop. So they would get a, a text alert or an email, however they have it set up, and this way they would know, especially in inclement weather. You have other children, you don't have to take them out in the cold or the rain, you could wait until you get that notification before you go out there.
All right, thank you very much. This is Vininga, this is Yanni, good to see you guys.
Hi, Jen, hi, I'm two at Sandy Run, two at Fort Washington. We, our issues were minor compared to some people, I did have to drive my kids in a few days. Um, my question is, uh, cause I kind of remember a situation similar to this five years ago, different leadership. How does our school district compare team-wise to other school districts? Like, in, in another transportation department, is there more people helping you? Like, I'm imagining you with all these emails and if you had more support, and same thing over there for you, so like, in another similar school district? Is there more people doing the job that you guys are doing? Can anybody answer that? Do we know? I'm just wondering if we're, if, if you guys need more support.
No, I think, I think the, if, if I'm being completely blunt, I think, you know, it's the planning and preparation that goes into things. Whether it's a migration of systems, implementation of systems. You know, one of the things when I was alerted the Thursday before school started, that I asked if a communication went out and a communication still hadn't gone out, that drew my ire because we have to get kids to school to be able to teach them. And so, you know, I think that the big takeaway for, for both transportation and technology is that the planning pieces have to come and we have to back map, like, what's a drop dead date? So like, August first should be the drop dead date for, for bus routes. So when does that work have to begin to make sure that we hit that, we hit that target? Because we know there's going to be, you know, stops that might need to be changed or buses that are overcrowded. And I think back mapping, uh, you know, moving forward will help, will help with that.
Do other districts around us do the busing totally, do some of them outsource it?
Some districts outsource, they would be with First Student or other companies, and some do, it's a mix, and some do, uh, you know, transportation in-house.
And, and what any, it's like, would it ever help to have sort of temporary or seasonal people helping with these communication issues, like, wow? Um, the emails, I, I mean, I get a million emails, I, I know how hard it is to get through them. Is that ever talked about at all, just to help so we can have better communication when these?
It is, and it will be moving forward. I, my goal, you know, one of the things, I asked very clearly not to be in positions like this. You know, I, so now that, now that both systems are functional, right? And we will draw very hard, firm dates about when, you know, when, uh, we should have routes out. I think not only the number of emails will go down, but I think there'll be fewer emails because there'll be better vetting of where, where the stops are, if that makes sense. Because, you know, right, PENDOT says XYZ stop is not safe, it's a, you know, it's a hazardous route. But I think, you know, this community has experienced a tragedy with, with students being hit before. And so we have to be, we have to decide clearly what our threshold is for safe routes, right? So the PENDOT route or the PENDOT, you know, criteria, we take that into account, but we also have to, you know, come up very clearly with our own definition of what, what we will tolerate as a route versus what we think is not right for kids.
All right, thank you.
Hi, um, my name is Hillary Steinberg, I have two kids at Sandy Run, and I'm going to first apologize, I came in late, I was at another student meeting across the way. And so I may have missed some of this and it may be repeating, but first of all, the first contact we got said we would know our routes by August thirty-first and we should check online. I did, my bus stop was still there. The day school started, I got a call from my next door neighbor, she got an email that said the stop had been eliminated. We did not. We were going to that stop. I don't know where the disconnect in that is, but I checked on the thirty-first, like I was told to, my stop still existed, two days later it was gone. These routes that you have, do they take in any way into account the weight of the books and Chromebooks that you're giving these kids? My daughter's trek to the bus stop has more than doubled, and is over half a mile on an incline to go to school. She can't use her wheeled bag because they don't fit in the middle school lockers because they're like this wide. She's carrying more than fifty percent of her body weight. You cannot tell me that that is not endangering my titles, won't be. Why are these stops being eliminated when you're now also endangering the children that, on other ways? I mean, clearly these routers are not contemplating the fact that the teachers send home books. And while the Chromebooks are wonderful, if I have one at home and one at school, that would be great too, but they weigh something inside the case you have to put them inside of. And to top it off, both my kids play instruments, which go on top of the fifty percent of her body weight, and you don't provide an instrument at school. So how are we taking all these other extemporaneous items into consideration with this software, which clearly is not taking it into consideration?
So one of the, the issues that I'm faced with is, is the fact that for the last ten years, and I'm, I'm not trying to point fingers at, at my predecessors, but for the last ten years, it's been revolving door in that position. And they have, for the most part, been yes men. You know, a parent says, I want a stop closer to my house, okay, here, here, there's a stop closer to your house. And then what, what that creates is a lot of stops in close proximity to each other. And in small neighborhoods.
You have been made every stop in my neighborhood but one. In the set, the half of Dublin Hunt, there is one stop. It is an enormous community. You cannot tell me that adding a second or a third stop would put it close to my house. My kids walked a quarter of a mile last year. Now they're walking over half a mile just to get to the bus. Now, I'm not saying it has to be next to my house, it wasn't, but you can't tell me one bus stop for the entire community is reasonable.
There, there's more than one bus stop.
No, 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 this bus comes in, makes a U-turn, which by the way, in the dead of winter, how that could be a K-turn according to my son, and goes back out. How that, it's, there's a, there's three buses, there's one half the community has two buses, my house has one bus. And you cannot tell me that one bus for the entire half of the community with a U-turn makes sense. You, you would have to.
The, the bus, the bus should never make U-turns.
Yeah, I watched it make one the first day of school. Right past the old bus stop.
And this is for Sandy Run Middle School?
Yes.
Yeah, I will take a look at that.
Hi, I'm Kelly Hill, I'm a daughter of a brand new kindergartner to Maplewood Elementary. And forgive me if these are things you already know, but I'm brand new, so just have a couple of questions, more about, um, how the information goes from point A to point B and through the, through the channels here. So first of all, do the bus drivers, when did they get their routes? And do they have a chance to, um, you know, go on practice routes? And if you could explain that portion?
So our drivers came back to work on August twenty-second. Uh, we had a meeting actually in this room, and at the end of the meeting, they were given their routes, and then they were provided two hours to go out and practice their routes. So they've had their route sheets since August twenty-second.
Okay, so did a lot of those change? Is that why there's such confusion?
In, in some instances, there, there was some change, uh, mostly with, with students, uh, but not with the stops.
Yeah, like we had a bus driver come through and ask us where a street was, and they didn't seem to know the route. And maybe that's just a one-off scenario, I just wanted to know if they had ample time to, to run their routes or practice.
As I said, they were, they received their routes on, uh, August twenty-second.
Okay, and then, excuse me, um, we were assigned to a certain bus on day one. Um, it came up from the right-hand side. Day two, a totally different number of bus came up from the left-hand side. Um, so we put kids in the bus, day two, we're at the bus stop, my daughter's a brand new kindergartner, got on the bus that she got on the first day. So where, I'm just trying to figure out, and I'm not trying to point fingers, like, where does the communication go between, I guess, the, like, from PENDOT to, to, um, Infinite Campus? But how are the teachers or the people that put the kids on the bus, how are they to know that?
So the school staff, they have the information as far as what's in Infinite Campus and what bus the, the student should be going on.
Okay, so that was not up to date, so that, is that where the disconnect probably was?
Uh, that, that could have been, yeah.
And I heard something about the teachers on some of the buses, are there teachers on the buses, uh, from Maplewood?
It de- it depends on the school, that, it, it's really up to the, the principal's discretion. I know the, the principal of Fort Washington, every year, he puts, for the, the first couple of days of school, he puts teachers on, on the buses.
So if there is a change that's made in the system, how real-time is that info and how often are the people that are putting the kids on the bus checking that?
So once integration happens, uh, and this may be more for, uh, Mr. Vinodra to answer, but I'm, it should be just as it was in, uh, e-school, where we make the change in Infinite Campus and then it notifies the parent.
But then does the people, the people that are putting the kids on the bus, do they ever get notified?
I'm sorry, what's it?
The people that are putting the kids on the bus, where do they get notified?
School staff. Yeah, the school staff would get it through Infinite Campus as well.
Okay, so they just say, oh, so I, again, no, do they get an update through the system, like?
They, they should, they should get an update through the system.
Okay. And then I guess the last question is, um, is there, and I may have missed this, I apologize, is there, um, some type of system, uh, that you're working on for next year where there are parent issues? Um, how will, cause I know I called, I emailed, I did a couple of things, didn't hear back, followed up. Um, is there like a system, wait, if you have an issue, send an email with this specific headline or? And I know you probably get a lot of questions about certain bus stops, is there a way to like, if you're having issues at Kane all the time, you're getting lots of emails, or can that information be collected somehow? So you're looking at all the Kane and all the people?
I'm, I'm sure that there's a way to do it, I, I don't know how to do it, and that's something that I can look into. Uh, but for, for next year, as far as planning goes, we, um, so, so my timeline is for us to test this parent portal that I, I, I mentioned earlier, test that, um, you know, sometime next month. And then hopefully go live by January, and then in February, what we can do, and this is something that we've never had the, the capability of doing before, is we can create a term in our routing software for next year, and we can already start planning for next year. So, and, and the one thing, you know, we, we talked about stops that are unsafe, the one thing that we can do in the system is, when we mark that stop unsafe this year, it's in there unsafe for as long as we have the, the routing software, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Chelsea Foster, I have four children in the district, mine are older, and, um, I had heart palpitations the first day of school, and I have high schoolers, middle schoolers. And I'm not that type of parent, anybody who knows. Uh, our stops were changed, I didn't get a notification at first. Um, my child's stop is at the top of the hill, it's at the end of our street, we're in Jeffrey, right where Twining is, and it's a blind spot, and there's no sidewalk on this side going up the hill. So when I'm looking out, you can't see the cars coming down, they come down as little dip and they come up, so even, a car can be three cars away, you can't see it till it gets up to the top of the dip. So I was very concerned about my children going that way, we actually had a different stop across Luncle the first time. So I was happy to find I was on this side, then I saw that, and it's. So I was happy to find I was on this side, then I saw that and said, ooh. So I actually take them to a different stop. Now, my one suggestion is, and also to find out if it's possible, because I know this used to happen, maybe it's old school, is there any way that maybe posting could at some point be where we could see the stops that are on route, all the stops? Because had I not known from my children that there were some other stops on the route, they didn't even know where else to go. Like, we, we didn't, let me backtrack for a moment. First, we didn't know where our stop was. We thought we were in Dreschertown Road across Lyonville. Then it wasn't there, it was at Ashton and Twining. And so we went up there at first, there was no one at that stop. I drove them. So then that's where the path came in. Then, that was day one, I took them to school. The next day, I realized all the young people were trying to figure out where to go. So we now go to the bottom one. But if you could mark Ashton and Twining as a dangerous place to cross for people coming off of Jeffrey, it's a blind spot. You can't see the cars, I know the cars can't see you, and they come at 40 miles an hour. Secondly, the other request was, is there some way that we could have a master list? I know that seems kind of old fashioned, but I think it's helpful for parents to be able to see where the bus is coming from and where it's going to. So if there's something that's going on, we can get our kids to that next stop. We kind of had to do that through trial and error to kind of find out. I said, ask your friends where the other stops are, and I just drive them to the next stop. So, I know it sounds kind of crazy, but it's... It's helpful, it's helpful for me as a parent to know where their route is coming from and going to, to get the big picture, you know? And I also put in a request and I haven't got a response, but I wanted to find out what happened to the bus coming down Jeffrey, because the bus has still come down Jeffrey? And when I called, he said, well, is that a safe stop? I'm like, there's no safer stop. There's no cars, there's no traffic, if anyone knows Jeffrey. But now, it still does. It literally comes right down Jeffrey, comes right to Jeffrey and to Lyonville. But if this is Jeffrey, my kids have to come all the way up Jeffrey and then, all the way up Jeffrey, and then go all the way down to the bottom to Sandy Run. And it's a long street, so now they're going, it's a good 10 to 15 minute walk. But their real bus stop is at the top of the hill near Susquehanna.
Is this for high school or for Sandy?
This is for high school, for high school. Their real bus stop is actually at the top of the street, at the end of the street, and they go all the way up to Susquehanna. And the street that goes up to Susquehanna has no sidewalks on our side. And it's a blind spot, it goes up and down, like a roller coaster. So I literally drive them to the next one.
Okay, I can look back into that stop at Lyonville and Jeffrey.
Thank you. Like on Jeffrey, I just do want to say, I do see an elementary school bus, it stops on Lyonville? And that kind of concerns me. But Jeffrey is very safe. Parents wait on Jeffrey, I see them out there all the time. There is an elementary school stop there, I believe it's for Thomas Fitz, so.
I don't have a complaint, I just have questions. Jenny Patel. I'm so quiet, I actually blew myself for four minutes. It won't be that long, I'm just teasing.
You might put the timer up.
I'm kidding. Usually I have to talk really fast. So I was wondering, so the emails, well, I was wondering, what would help you? If you're getting thousands of emails, which we realize obviously is way too many, and we're going to fix that for next year, but what would help you? Someone puts the memo, bus number, school, something? Is there a standard form that could be sent by someone who answered the phone that gets sent out, that someone could put their official complaint on paper? Would that be able, easier for you to handle? Or at least addressed? And also, how many cars going by a spot in 15 minutes is considered hazardous? So one of my questions was about driver training. That was a concern, because the piece of paper, which I've seen, literally just names the stops. It doesn't necessarily teach them where to go. So my lovely bus driver, he's really wonderful person, he has come, I think, it's now settled, but he has come various directions. It's almost, and he's looking at space, that, you know, a corner can be hit by different directions. And it's like, almost like he was trying to figure it out the first two weeks of school. I think he's figured it out. But I just wondered if it could be more of a GPS-like sort of map, where you really map it out for them, so that way also, if a substitute came, it's not like they're just stopping, you know, Highland and, I don't know, Camp Hill, but that they're, that's not even a stop. But that they know, because what direction are they hitting that? You know, to show them the whole route, the driver, so it'd be easier. And maybe August 22nd, I don't know if this is a contract issue, is a little late. Right? If we have a drop dead date of August 1st, which would be our goal for next year, maybe it seems like August 22nd is a little late. And are they all doing it? Maybe two hours isn't enough, because I'm not sure why there was still some confusion with the circulating around. Maybe that's because of the changes. If you can maybe provide the rules to the community, like in terms of what PENDOT says, what maybe are hazardous roads in terms of Upper Dublin safety, or how many cars pass by, how far someone can walk? I know that was in one email. Maybe that would be helpful, if there's questions that people would be answering. Phil, this is more for you. Like, I got an email that my bus was running 10 minutes late, but someone else also on my route did not. So is that because I did something in Infinite Campus to get that and then someone didn't? And maybe if there's a tutorial for that, I'm not sure why, if it's two people on the same bus, one got it and one didn't. Maybe they're not set up right in Infinite Campus, I don't know. Or maybe it was just an error and made the wrong bus, I don't know. I think that was all. Oh, I know, my last one. And I don't know, do you deal also, so your transportation and buses is what we think about, but how about the walkers? Because I've gone to Sandy Run a lot in the last couple of weeks, and I'm not sure how those walkers are getting out of that building, because there's construction on that sidewalk coming out of the Twining way, right? And then you have to go through the annex the other way. So I'm just curious how those kids are getting out, because it didn't seem set. And I think there was confusion with some parents on that too. Thanks.
So as far as the communications and getting information out to parents, both Dr. Yanni and Mr. Leckman know, it was my intent to, this year, start something new that we've never done. And that's, you know, provide a monthly newsletter to parents, changes that are, you know, happening in the district as far as transportation, and also including those safety pieces. Because what a lot of parents don't know is that we work very closely with Upper Dublin Police Department. It hasn't always been closely, but, and, you know, nationwide, every October, they run a program called Operation Safe Stop. And that's for, you had mentioned about, you know, Lyonville and Jeffrey, you know, saying that it's dangerous, cars pass the bus, you know, that's for those types of situations. So, you know, my intention this year was to start doing that in October, monthly newsletters, get information out to the community. But also to do, not in a forum such as this, but like Dr. Yanni does the coffee talks, you know, do that with the community to address concerns. So those are things that I do intend on doing. You know, this obviously was a huge setback for us, but, you know, we're trying to work through it and give this community what they deserve.
Back again, Brandy. Chris, you and I had talked earlier today, and you were mentioning that the ability to send an email out to a parent if there's a problem on a bus is done by you and one other person in transportation.
As far as I know.
And what we had talked about was, if you're on a trip and the other person's on a route, there's no one to do it. And I know it's only been four hours since we've talked, five hours since we've talked, but have you put any thought into who else can send the email to all of us if there's a problem?
Obviously, any of the office staff. There's always got to be somebody there to man the phones. And that's something that I have to get together with Mr. Vinogradov, to be sure that they have that capability as well.
So say tomorrow morning, you're on this drive and the other gentleman who's in the bus regimen, I can't think of his name, is also on the drive, and there's a problem with the bus. Rita's going to send an email out, because she has that ability?
Rita can send it out, so do all of the schools. And I just emailed all the principals to remind them that they have the ability through Infinite Campus to push out. It's really easy. I actually had my administrative assistant walk me through to see, within a minute, you can have, you know, just, even if it's just the bus is running 15 minutes late, or, you know, bus eight broke down, you're going to be picked up by, you know, bus 15, whatever that is.
Okay, so if there's a problem, the person driving the bus knows to call the school that they're going to, and then the school can push that out if there's no one in the bus, in the transportation center. I'm just making sure that the issue we had this past week isn't going to happen again.
So what should happen is the driver should call it into the office?
And the drivers know that, that you're going to say to them, or it's going to be on the board tomorrow, every day, if there's an issue, you have to contact so-and-so.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Thanks. Hi, it's Sandy again. You said something about if it's an unsafe stop, it will continue to be an unsafe stop?
Yes, if we, so if we mark, if we deem that a particular stop in the system is unsafe, that you and I won't have to have the same conversation next year.
So they'll be at an unsafe stop for the rest of the year?
No, no, that's not what I'm saying. I'm not saying that they'll be assigned to that stop, but what I'm saying is, there will never, we will never be able to put a stop in the system at that location again.
And how will you determine whether or not this stop is an unsafe stop?
Through an investigation.
And how will that work?
Depending on...
We're going to say that investigations should take, there should be resolution within three days. Within three days. Mr. Robbins, Mr. Leckman and I will be sitting down to define what an unsafe route looks like in Upper Dublin, we'll make sure that that's cleared up. And then within three business days, we'll make sure investigations are done.
And will you get input from the drivers? Because they have to know that they're unsafe.
Absolutely. It has to, you know, there are multiple people that need to have that voice.
Hello, Yapi Tua Marco. First, I just want to say thank you for addressing my major concern for a couple of days of school, so I appreciate that. My concern was also with just investigation of bus stops and timeline for bus stops that were changed to assess those. And can they be assessed during drop-off times to assess speed, bar count, all that stuff? And looking at it from the lens of, we have kindergartners on this bus stop. Something that's unsafe for a kindergartner is also unsafe for a bus driver.
Yeah, the most ideal time to do these investigations is during the normal pickup and drop-off. Because otherwise, you know, you're not getting the traffic that you're going to get at those times. So it's very important to hold those investigations at those times.
I also realize that's a challenge, because you have all the bus stops going at that time too. So just so that it's an accurate depiction, and what will the process be if your concern is about bus stops that were changed before that? And that'll be communicated, I know that's a problem, but...
Just so that we're clear, there's some instances where I'll go out and I'll look at that particular area, not during the time, and I can automatically say right there, you know, this isn't going to be safe for kids to come here. So I don't need to go do that real-time investigation.
And just keep in mind, when parents are getting kids off the bus stop, not only do we have little kids, we even have littler kids, like a three and four-year-old who doesn't quite understand traffic patterns, so that would just mean very much appreciation.
I just have one follow-up question. So let's say, for example, my mom gets the schedule. Is that schedule individualized just to our stop of what time that bus is coming? Or she gets to see the whole schedule, where that bus is starting at with the first stop and the last stop?
Which schedule? You mean in Infinite Campus?
Yeah.
No, it's just for that individual.
So why was there a change when you could see the entire schedule of the bus route to individualized stops?
So the Office of Safe Schools really asks quasi-require school districts not to post full bus routes for safety concerns of students. So, you know, the practice of posting them on school windows before or putting them on the website, that has really been discouraged. That said, I think one of the things that we need to do a better job is give a little bit of a window of time when buses should be arriving. So if the system generates and it says, you know, the bus is going to be there at 8:25, we should really say, the bus should be there anywhere between, you know, 8:20 and, you know, 8:30. And I know that's a, we wouldn't give that big of a window. But, you know, giving that window is probably the most prudent thing to do moving forward.
So why, so I understand that you guys had a new system at that point. I guess another question is, when was the, it was the Office of Safe Schools?
Safe Schools.
When was that policy put in?
We were asked not to post districts-wide, 2017.
Okay, so that's basically what I was saying. And why didn't we just transition those PDF files of the bus routes to Infinite Campus or eSchool? Because, I did ask the same question, sorry, my bad. Oh, you did. Sorry, my bad. Thank you. I'm just going to re-send the question.
I'm happy to stay, but if anyone else is thinking of speaking, if you could just stand up in line so we have an idea of how many more speakers, thank you.
Hi, my name is Dawn Ollie. I spoke to you as through email. My daughter went missing for an hour and the police were called. I just want to know why, like, my daughter got dropped off in front of our house. The bus actually drove past the police and the bus, didn't even stop and acknowledge the, like, fact that, like, you know, the police were there, so he should have pulled over and said, hey, what's going on? He just drove by. If I hadn't sent a friend to my house, my daughter would have just been sitting in front of the house with the police as a bus stop. So why was there no protocol or communication with the bus driver? Because for 30 minutes, they were on the speakers, I'm sorry, I'm shaming, I'm so like, emotional about this, but for 30 minutes, they were on the radio looking for my daughter and could not find my daughter. And when my daughter got dropped off at the house, that's when, you know, they realized she was on a bus. But why, why was he not able to communicate with the other buses? And why was there not a protocol with the school where they had a list of the school buses saying, is Katie James on this bus or this bus, this bus, like going? And then 30 minutes later, here comes my daughter getting dropped off in front of the bus from the end of the house, and she told me there were six other kids on that bus that weren't even supposed to be on the bus, and the bus driver was asking them where they lived. And there was kindergarten, my daughter's a fourth grader, so she knew, like, address, where we live, all that stuff. There's kindergartners on that bus that don't, that probably are confused. So how are, what is the protocol so that that doesn't happen again?
What bus was this?
This was, she's supposed to be on 14, but she ended up on bus seven. I just want to know, I just want to know if there's a protocol or if there's like a list that the principal can have, so they can call each bus and say, hey, do you have this person? Because she's, because my sister was actually at the bus stop. And I was rushing home from Philly on the phone with all types of people, asking if they saw my daughter even get on a bus. Because if she got on a bus, then I would have been okay. But she wasn't. They, no one saw her, no one said that they even saw her. And they're on the radio for 30 minutes because there are so many kids missing and on the wrong buses. And my daughter was the only one they couldn't find. That's why the principal ended up coming to our neighborhood with the police at that. And then the bus driver didn't even go to the bus stop, they went, they dropped her off in front of my house when there was no one there. So what is the protocol? What are they going to do to fix this? Because there was other little kids on that bus that probably wouldn't have been able to give directions to the bus driver.
What is the, I mean, the protocol, all the buses can communicate with one another.
But this was only a bus that they couldn't communicate with for some reason, and didn't even realize it until my daughter was found.
Yeah, so the driver didn't realize that his radio wasn't working that day, so...
Okay, so, okay, so they have cell phones though. So there should have been, why wasn't there a list at the school with bus 21, however many buses there are, they should have been on that bus or calling each and every bus saying, do you have this person, do you have this person, do you have this person? Why was that not, like, instead, they just, like, they just called the police and my daughter had to get interviewed by the police? Like, there's no reason for that. She's supposed, we live across the street from the school, literally. The school lets out 3:45 and she gets off the bus at 3:50. There's no reason why I should be getting a phone call at 4 o'clock saying my daughter's missing. And she didn't, she didn't get dropped off to my house at 4:45 with no explanation, but oh, sorry, we didn't know. Like, we didn't know she was on bus seven. And then she had to get interviewed by the police. So what is, what is, how are you guys going to fix that? So what, what is, what is, how are you guys going to fix this? Because it wasn't just my daughter, it was little kids too. It was about seven kids, because she said that after he finished his route, he told all the kids to come to the front and give them directions to their houses. And why didn't he know to call you guys and let you guys know? Then at least we would know, okay, they're just running late. Because my friends are actually, um, on that bus too, and I called them and I said, listen, you're just gonna have to pick up your kids because they don't know where my daughter's at. So she actually went to the bus stop to pick up her kids. But that wasn't, that should have been communicated by you guys as well, you know? She only knew because she had a tracker on her ki, tracker on her kids, and that's how she knew that they were okay because they were in my neighborhood. So she just thought that you guys were, they were just running late. But there's no, there, I don't understand why is there, that should have taken 10 minutes for someone to call each and every bus and look for my child. That's it. Some kind of, now, I mean, I mean, I have a GPS on my daughter now, but, I mean, not everyone changes her
Can we be sure that the, the drivers test the radios before they go on their runs? At least so that they, they are communicating?
Absolutely.
That there's an active test?
In, in that day, I, I was actually the one, if, the, the school doesn't have radio contact with, with our buses. Miss Police called me and, and I started calling out on the radio, you know, bus by bus, uh, to the buses that, that serve us, uh, that school. And, but, you know, that particular bus was the only one that I, I was unable to get a hold of. And as my transportation manager left to go try and see if he could locate that bus, that's when I got the call from Miss Police saying that your daughter was home.
So as of right now, do the schools have accurate listings of everyone who is supposed to be on buses? So if I'm an elementary principal, I can look at my list at bus eight?
Yes.
They, they have that?
Yep.
Thank you. Just going back to a few questions ago when you were talking about deeming bus stops unsafe. Our bus stop at Kane and Butler has been deemed unsafe previously. So is it, was it just kind of the two systems not talking to each other that, is that what kind of happened?
No, that, that was just lack of documentation from previous directors.
Okay, okay.
But if, but now if a stop is deemed unsafe and we're not going to transport from that stop, it will never have to be discussed again, right?
Correct.
Or be blocked out in the system, okay.
And when do we know if you've deemed them unsafe? Do, when do we know that you've deemed them unsafe? Like, over the next couple?
It usually comes up with the, the follow-up, uh, you'll be got a follow-up, uh, of my investigation.
Okay.
I just wanted to have a follow-up. My son, third grader, um, the bus driver doesn't know him. I think the bus driver's been out more than he's been there the past year and a half. He actually goes on the same bus route but gets off at a friend's house on Tuesdays because there's a carpool to an extracurricular activity. Um, I send a note to the school and I send a note in his backpack and I have a picture of it on his phone, so that should he ever be questioned about getting off at a different stop, he has an authorized note that he can say, you know, this is where I belong. He's never been questioned. If kids get off at our house, which is a later stop, they're never questioned. So I don't believe that, at least in our case, the bus driver knows the students and knows where they should be going. So that's, so that's one point. But another question I had, um, just as a follow-up, and this is unrelated, um, however it would play out in the future for communication, um, there's some construction that's going to be happening in our development and the road's going to be one-way, opposite of the way that the bus comes in for that elementary school. So I'm a little nervous, you know, for that first week, that first day that he's going to get on the bus. Where, we've been told by our HOA that it's been communicated to the township, but is that information getting to the school? Where, where do we as a parent have a role there in terms of communicating with the district versus the folks that are doing the work and making sure that the kids know where to board the bus?
Yeah, that has not been communicated. Um, if you could follow up with an, an email, I could reach out to them to try and get that information. You know, the township usually sends us, uh, documentation with, you know, the, the timeline that they expect, uh, that, that roadwork to occur. So having that from private agencies is also very important.
Hi, my name is Jeremy Sloan. I spoke to Mr. Robbins in email. Wow, this is scary. This is really scary. I was not gonna get up and speak. And then I heard, you know, a couple of the other moms speak and you're losing kids, like, you failed this year, bad, really bad. You failed the families, you failed the community, you failed the schools. Kelly got up and spoke how her daughter was put on her own bus the same day. My kids were pulled off the old bus and put on the right bus. So the schools did not get the right communication. So now you're not communicating to the parents, you're not communicating to schools properly. And, and you're just assuring Dr. Yanni that yes, the principals now know, you know, know who's on what bus, but I know that day, they did not know who was on what bus. This mom's principal obviously did not know where her daughter was. So you're saying they know, but how do we know as parents that our kids are getting on the right bus and that the school knows to put those kids on the right bus? Honestly, if we did not have the bus driver that we have, my kids would not be in the bus. Fortunately, Mr. Mid is amazing, he was our driver last year. After being switched back and forth, we wound up on his bus again. I have no worry about my kids now as long as he is their driver. You assured me everything was fixed and, yeah, our bus is gonna be there at eight nineteen every day. That day, the bus shows up at eight oh eight, almost fifteen minutes earlier, eleven minutes earlier. Fortunately, we're out there early every day anyhow, but you still can't get it right as to when my bus is coming. And fortunately, the stop is right now and we have a driver who knows the kids and he knows every kid. I heard this young lady, this lady over here say that a five-year-old got off the bus and walked the wrong way. That driver let a five-year-old off a bus at what sounds like a dangerous intersection with no grown-up there to get the kid?
Well, all kindergartners are supposed to be dropped off with a parent and only with a parent.
Uh, I'm sorry, ma'am, is that, that's not what happened, correct?
They're crossing a bad road.
I'm sorry, what's happening?
They're still crossing really bad roads. The parents can't go and pick them off, take them off the bus because there's, it's such a narrow road. You wouldn't be able, there's no room.
There's no stop signs, it's a T junction on Amblin Road. There's a hill. You've seen lots of videos on television of cars that go flying through and hit the kids. So we have kids that are five years old crossing Amblin Road without an opposing stop sign and hoping to die if no car comes flying down the road.
So can you investigate this stop tomorrow, please?
Uh, can we ever consider crossing guard to these intersections? Do we have that ability?
That, that's the township, that's the police.
I, I mean, that's, I mean, we're fortunate, like, we're on a major road, but we have a great bus driver, the bus stops on the side, it's been safe. I think we're, we're in a good situation, but God, I'm scared now about all these other kids. How do we not have more incidents than we do?
I think, and I'm, I'm not trying to, to placate, but I think what, what ultimately needs to happen is we define what, what we consider unsafe routes are, will eliminate the need for kids to be crossing at these, you know, difficult intersections or where there's hills or where there's blind spots. And I think, I think the, the biggest takeaway is, you know, next year, I'm gonna, I'm, I'm just gonna drive all the bus routes, you know, I mean, I
But why is that not done? Like, Mr. Robbins, you've been here, this is your third year, and I know that because my son was in first grade and that's, second grade was the first year you were here, but every year we've had to call about transportation issues, every year. And it's been repetitive issues, so this year was just, it blew up. But, yet, Dr. Yanni, please do. Mr. Robbins, I feel like you should be out there following buses on a regular basis, seeing what's going on.
And I typically do. If I don't, if I'm not driving them myself.
And, and, I mean, why is your bus stopping and asking a mom, where is this road? Where am I going?
Well, that, that should never happen.
Yeah, why am I walking around in the morning?
Such a mess when you can just take it back to normal.
So, well, I think there's a couple of things in play. I don't know, Mr. Robbins doesn't know if a bus driver is stopping and asking a mom a question, we, we don't know that unless it's reported, right? So now that it's been reported, we can, we can absolutely, you know, take care of
But a bus driver should have a radio, right? To call in and say
Right, they should have a radio, they should have a map, they should have their
And if their routes are changing, they need the chance to go out and drive that route before, or someone who knows the route should be on that bus.
Exactly right.
The driver.
Exactly right.
Like, and we can't do this, I mean, and there shouldn't be kids on a bus for an hour, whether it's, you know, you guys didn't plan right and you don't have enough buses for special needs, I'm sorry, do you pay enough in taxes that this mom's child who's special needs does not need to be on the bus for an hour? These children who, you, you guys can't get it wrong. You can't get it wrong and have all kinds of kids, you know, even one day on the bus for an extra hour, it just doesn't work. I understand last year, the snow event, that was a whole nother level, you know? The roads were just awful, and I know that, but on the first day of school, kids shouldn't be on the bus for an hour, buses shouldn't be an hour late, buses not showing up. You don't implement a new system, and I've done software implementations, and I don't deal with people's kids. You know, what I do is not that important, but I don't implement something without testing, testing and testing again. And then parallel, right? You do it manually, you run the system, it's the first year, you don't fail this bad where there's people's children around. Yep, correct. Thank you.
So you'll have to forgive me, I have a follow-up question. It's really about communication. Could you tell us the hours of operation of the transportation office? The reason why I ask is that our children are on buses, um, dwell early in the morning. I imagine some of them, these schoolers start out six thirty, six forty-five, I don't know. And then, but I know at least for Sandy Run, um, my child is waiting for a bus before the office at Sandy Run opens. And when I've had concerns, um, I've tried to call transportation first and get no answer. And then try to call the school, the school office isn't open. So, um, I guess it is a question, when is the transportation office open for operations so that we can communicate should there be an issue? But also make the point that if it isn't currently open when our children are being transported, it needs to be. There needs to be a human being that we can speak to, not a voicemail, not a leave-your-message, not a
What time does your office open in the morning?
So, and, and that's posted actually on the district website. We're open from six o'clock to four thirty.
If my child's on a bus stop, I'm not, I'm, I'm really not looking at the bus.
No, no, I, I, I know that, um, but just saying, that information's available. We're open from six o'clock in the morning until four thirty in the afternoon.
So why can we not get in touch with a person?
Because typically, there's only one person in the office at between six and eight.
So I think that you need to look at your staffing model, um, because if there are issues, we need to be able to get in touch with somebody. And if the resourcing that you have is inadequate to handle issues, you need to resource it appropriately.
I'm just gonna, sorry, I have a high school student in Sandy Run, thank you, please, thank you so much for even addressing this. Two years ago, when I had all my issues with, um, your predecessor, I was not received well and I did not have a positive interaction with her. So I appreciate you guys doing this with us. The second thing is bus twenty-seven for Sandy Run, I wasn't gonna say anything, I'm the one who spoke to you this morning. He was sixteen minutes late again this morning. My kid is freaking out every day. He's been in school on time, in his classroom, for homeroom, three days out of ten. All the other days, he's not on school on time. And he's been late for Core One, well, his UA One is his first period. He was, he was late for it a couple of times, and that's impacting his education. So what is our decision of what are we doing with bus twenty-seven? Why is it sixteen minutes late regularly? My bus stop was originally seven twenty-three, got moved up to seven twenty, which shocked the crap out of me, honestly. When he can't make the seven twenty-three, how the heck is he gonna make the seven twenty? So what are we gonna do?
So I actually have my, uh, transportation managers going to be running that route tomorrow to see if there are inefficiencies in the route or the driver. Because based upon that route, uh, me driving it myself, there, there shouldn't be any inefficiencies.
But it's more times than not. And it's, it's all the time, and it's unacceptable.
So we have an answer tomorrow about why that is, because we can't have kids twenty minutes late for class, yeah?
Yeah, and he is. Like, the one day, he was halfway through UA One. That's not okay.
That should be resolved, uh, tomorrow morning.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
What's happening?
My, my child as well.
I'm, yes, I'm going to
She gives zero time, on time, so.
I guess bus twenty-seven, same kinda point. What's confusing is that it seems to be getting to the high school on time, because I have a high school or I have a middle school. Dropped off at the high school this morning, I think, if I remember, it was at six fifty-nine, when my daughter got off the bus and then it did not get to Clinton and Clover until seven twenty-three, when it's seven oh six on the schedule. So there seems, I don't know, again, the bus drivers go to that same church parking lot, um, but something is happening between seven o'clock and seven twenty-three.
So if the times on the documents are wrong and you find that the, when you actually run the routes, they're, the, the times are different, can we make sure that that's, put in Infinite Campus
Absolutely.
With an email to the parents and guardians of kids on that bus so that they know, okay, I know, you know, we were saying seven oh six, but it's really going to be, I don't know, seven oh eight or whatever it is, seven ten, seven fifteen, whatever it is. I think that's, that's the mismatch that we're having. And this is why, and I'm not blaming the integrate, but that's why the integration of the systems is so important. And also, we have to check on, check on these times. Because I don't want kids, it's one thing to be waiting in August and September, it's another thing to be waiting when it's raining or, you know, as we get into the colder months. So I wanna make sure that we have that information, but my directive is emails have to go out to the parents and guardians of kids on that bus so that they know explicitly what to expect. I wanna thank everyone for coming tonight. I took notes and I know Mr. Sirota was busily taking notes too, so I'll run his notes past my notes. We'll make sure that all of this information gets, summaries of the meeting, get put up online. One of the things that, um, I'm thankful that you came out tonight to share your experiences and thoughts and concerns. So, um, we need to make sure that kids get into school on time and we need to make sure that we have all the, that we have all of the information accurate for, for families. And that needs to happen tomorrow. Like, there, you know, it just has to happen. Parents, guardians, community have the right to expect that. So, thank you very much for coming.